Welcome to our Collier County School Board Candidates Forum. We're going to start with the invocation. Please welcome Pastor Pam Forbes, Pastoral Care Director for Grow Church.
It's an honor to represent Jesus Christ, but it's also an honor to represent Grow Church and our pastors, Pastor James and Tracy Boyd, and they send their love. And I just want you guys to know that it is a tremendous blessing to be here with you, but it's because we have partnered with you guys in prayer. And what the school board has taken on is by no means an easy task. And so it has been our honor to daily uplift you guys in prayer. And I want you to know, it's not just Grow Church that's doing it, but across the city, there are individuals meeting and praying for our school board. This is in a very, very important area in our lives. And so what a blessing it is, and I wanted to take a moment and speak a blessing over our school board. It comes from God's Word. It's in Job, Chapter 22, and verse 28. And not only for our school board, for any of the others that are here running for office. I want to speak this blessing over you. Job 22, and verse 28 says, "You will decide and decree a thing, and it will be established for you; and the light of God's favor will shine upon your ways all of your days." And that's what we declare over you, is that God's favor is literally resting on you. It's going before you. It's surrounding you. It's keeping you. It's guiding you, and it's protecting you. Let's pray. Lord, I thank you for all these individuals represented here today. Many of them have listened to your call to make a difference in our city, Naples, Florida. As we approach this midterm election in just a very few months, we declare that from district to district, that you would protect those who carry your heart for morality, ethics, and desire to please you, Jesus. Fill our city with those that will fulfill your purpose in our land, that our city would cherish your values, and uphold truth, and glorify you. We declare that honesty and integrity would reign, that there would be great unity amongst the churches and through the governmental seats in our city. We pray for your kingdom to come and your will to be done in these midterm elections. Lord, I declare that there is a stirring in the hearts of those that have agreed with your heart to arise, and that they will vote in this midterm election. We declare that all passivity would be broken and removed. We ask that hearts are free to move and take a stand for you and their purpose in Naples. We declare all of this in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Pam. I'd like to welcome Yvette Benaros, a veteran. She's a member. She's the second Vice President of the Apef Ardu. She will lead us in the pledge.
For our veterans, thank you, and to their family members and to our Vietnam veterans, welcome home. My pledge to the nations too, however, of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are going to get started with our introductions, and the candidates are going to go in the order that is on the screen. I'll read it to you, since you may not be able to see the screen. And we're going to start with Kim Bouvier from District One.
Thank you, everyone, and good afternoon. My name is Kimberly Bouvier, and I'm running in District One. I am a proud, American, conservative, Christian mother. I have a beautiful 16-year-old daughter with Down Syndrome. I am a mama bear. Mama bears by nature are protective and devoted. They do not fight indiscriminately. They fight with purpose, using wisdom, discernment, and common sense. They confront with courage and are committed to the end. They are confident and competent. I will fight for all students in Collier County, but especially for the 38% that are failing English Language Arts and Math. I will confront the $1.3 billion budget and find ways to reduce spending. I will protect students and parental rights. I will restore the foundations of academic excellence and traditional values in our classrooms. Vote for me, Kimberly Bouvier, a conservative mama bear, the best choice in District One. Thank you.
Jerry Rutherford.
Hello, my name is Jerry Rutherford. I'm running for school board in District One. I can assure you that I will be the most active, motivated, dedicated, aggressive board member that has graced this office in a long time. When I say aggressive, I don't mean loud and boisterous. Teddy Roosevelt said, "Speak softly, but carry a big stick." This will be my full-time job, not a part-time job. I will not rubber stamp agenda items, policies, or procedures that come from the superintendent if I don't understand or agree with them. The office of school board member bears a great responsibility. On our shoulders rests the future of our students and our nation. We dare not fail. Abraham Lincoln said, "The philosophy," if you want to think of it, "the philosophy of the classroom in one generation will be the philosophy of the government in the next generation," and that's what we've got today. My pledge to you and our children is to be a guardian of the literature and material that they are exposed to in Collier County schools. I will be aggressive, but I'm also persistent, and I would thank you for your vote in October 23rd.
District Three, Jana Greer.
Thank you to the club for having me here today and for hosting this forum. I appreciate it. My name is Jana Greer. I'm an American First Constitutional Conservative, running for District Three for your Collier County School Board seat. I'm a mom of six. I'm a businesswoman. Yeah, I saw your face. Thank you. Yes, I am a mom of six. I am a businesswoman. I believe it's time to bring some common sense back to our school district. We have come a long way, but we still have changes, and we can do better. Our kids are our future, and as a businesswoman, I see what's being produced from hiring. It's dismal. It is really sad what is coming out. We have seen the left take over our school system, and it needs to stop. We have a $1.3 billion budget in this district, with 52% of your tax dollars going to that budget. We need changes. As a constitutional conservative, I will stand for those changes. Bringing a rollback rate would be a part of that goal, to make that change. Bringing an efficiency to that budget. We need to see our money being efficient and bringing education up. We have over 48%, almost 40% of our students that are not at reading and math level. These are not excellent stats. We need changes, and I am running to help bring that change. Thank you.
Kelly Lichter.
Hi, good afternoon. Kelly Lichter, District Three. Thank you so much for being here today. I appreciate you all getting involved in this important election. I am a wife, a mother of two amazing children. Back in 2011, my husband and I embarked on a journey for our kids, and we founded Mason Classical Academy and established the number-one public school in Collier County, which is also ranked in the top 1% in the state of Florida. We put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into this school, and Mason is named after my late father, Don Mason, who was a true American patriot. And we felt the need to help our country, help our children. So with this great success, though, came greed and envy, which we learned were very powerful weapons. But I also understand that truth is a very powerful weapon, and we've had to show a lot of courage. We've had to withstand some incredible adversity, but what's incredible is that the school is still remaining. It was almost ripped away from my children, and I'm happy to report that things are going tremendous for these children and families. I also want to inform you a little bit about myself. In my spare time, besides I sell real estate and work in property management, I do work for a local animal rescue and foster homeless dogs that are looking for their forever homes. And it's called Brooks Legacy Animal Rescue. And I also coach my son's basketball team, which I've really enjoyed. I used to coach girls' basketball, so it's been quite an experience coaching 10, 11, and 12-year-old boys, but it's truly a joy. And I just want to just say one last thing, is that, you know, I really feel that I have the courage, the credibility, and the commitment towards the next generation and to the future of our country. So I look for your support, and thank you so much for being here.
Jen Mitchell.
Good afternoon. My name is Jen Mitchell. I'm the current Chair of the Collier County School Board. I'm a local Realtor and mother of four children. Three of them have graduated from our traditional public schools. One currently attends Gulf Coast. I've lived here in Naples for 25 years, but I was born and raised in Lafayette, Indiana, where I graduated from Purdue University. Nearly four years ago, when I ran for school board, I couldn't possibly have imagined I would be serving during a pandemic. But I'm proud to say that this board has followed the lead of our governor every step of the way. We returned to in-person learning, making sure our families had multiple learning options available to them. Our students had access to clubs, sports, band, theater, orchestra. We went to mask optional immediately upon the expiration of Emergency Order 07 from the Department of Education, and we got great results. We achieved a record-high graduation rate of 92.7%. For the first time, we outperformed the state in all 21 tested areas, and we maintained our District A rating. We're on track to be debt-free by 2026. We're paying cash for the new high school to save you $41 million in interest payments, and we are the only district to pass a tax-neutral referendum. We didn't go back to the taxpayers to ask for more money. We simply asked for permission to move money from the capital side of the budget to the operational side. So we have so much to be proud of here in Collier County, but we also have work to do. And we often hear the question, "How are you an A-rated district when 38% of your students aren't proficient in math and reading?" Great question. The fact is, that's our biggest challenge, but it's not a challenge unique to Collier. In fact, that number statewide is much higher, and at the national level, excuse me, even higher than that. So it's a challenge that we are working to meet every day. 15% of our students do not speak English. 14% of our students have special needs. So we understand that the state testing presents a challenge, but it's one, again, our teachers are working hard to meet. I hope for your vote on August 23rd, so I can continue to push forward with reading and math proficiency, attracting and retaining great teachers, because they're the key to all of it, maintaining financial oversight of the budget, and all of the things that make this district great. So again, thank you for being here, and I hope I can count on your vote.
Moving on to District Five, Tim Mosheer.
Thank you for all coming. My name is Tim Mosheer. I do live in District Five. I actually live in Little Swamby in Everglade City. I take the drive up here every day for about an hour. I've spent 30 years in the trucking business, so I've delivered practically everything in your old path in the last 30 years. Now it's my chance to deliver a quality education. I've been holding school board meetings for a little over a year. I didn't like what they were doing, and instead of complaining, I decided to step up and do something about it. I've been married to my wife for over 34 years. I have three daughters and four grandchildren, and they started asking questions, and it just seemed that with the pandemic, a lot of things had changed. And I decided to step up, use common sense, and have a backbone, and take on the school board, and make some changes that's necessary. I just want to thank you all for spending an hour and a half with us and listening to our answers. Thank you.
Right, Terry.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for being here today. And I'll tell you a little bit about myself. I have my Bachelor of Science degree from Western Maryland College. I have a Master's in Educational Administration from Colorado State University. In 1978, I moved here with my family, my wife Ellen, my two children, Roy, who's a Methodist minister here in town, and my daughter Kathy, who's a math teacher. I also have four grandchildren. One of the grandchildren graduated from Soho Ridge High School. The other three graduated from Community Schools, where the property is the athletic grade. And I also have a great granddaughter, who's six months old. I'm getting ready to start all over again. Both of my children graduated from this high school, but not in college. My oldest two grandchildren have been in college and graduated. My younger two, one is at Iona right now, playing for Virginia, and he'll be a senior on the basketball team in the college. My granddaughter, Olivia, is a first-year cadet of the United States Air Force Academy. I've been serving this community for 44 years in education. I've been a teacher. I've been a coach. I've been an athletic director. I've been a vice principal. I've been a principal, and I'm serving on the school board of Collier County. Those 44 years have been very tough, and I think that out of all the statistics that this coach has said, I think our board has done an outstanding job. I retired in 2009, and that's when I was appointed by the governor to join the school board at that time. I'm very proud to serve the board, and we have made great strides in the last 10 years. I appreciate your vote on the 23rd of August.
And finally, District Five, Anna Torino.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Anna Torino, and I'm running for District Five. I am a mother of six and a grandmother of two. I come from a blended family. I am very blessed. I whittled very young, so raised my two older boys, which one is a Marine and one is an Army Ranger by myself. And God blessed me with a new husband that brought along three kids, and we adopted one of my students. Thank you. I'm sorry. I have spent my last 15 years in education and have been a witness to the decline in good education and teacher morale. I intend to champion a plan for teacher retention, including, but not limited to, assistance in the classroom, which is very much needed, pay raises, and... Invested, sorry, I lost it. Restructuring the training that they're doing. According to the teachers, they're being trained, but they're saying that the training they're given is not being sufficient, so when it comes to the school year, they really are at a loss. I will ensure that the school system does not infringe on parents' rights, that CRT does not sneak into the classrooms and put a stop to the indoctrination of our students. I will respect parents and concerned citizens when they have an issue they would like to bring to the board. I currently assist parents with issues that they have with schools and guide them on what their rights are in order to assist their child in order for them to succeed. Not only am I passionate about education, but I am driven to bring resolution to all the issues that we are having in the Collier County School Board. In representing District Five, I will have a voice and be in a position where I can affect change. I look forward to meeting you all and speaking to you, and please support me August 23rd with your vote and your help in my campaign. Thank you.
Thank you all for the introductions, while we have a whole lot of kids between all these people up here. And just a reminder, I am here to read off the questions and the lightning round questions from your committee club. So those that you have selected and who volunteered for your club, these are the questions that they believe you, as club members, would want to hear the answers to. So these aren't my questions. These are the questions that the club put forth, and the candidates will have one minute to respond to the narrative questions, the open-ended questions, and there'll be two to start. And then the lightning round, your candidates will say no or yes with the paddles that they have on their tables there. So we'll get started. With question one, and we're actually going to start with District Five to answer these questions, and I'll let you know which order we're going to go in. Question one, the Collier County Public School receives millions of taxpayer dollars each year. And what would you change about the current practice to hold the school board accountable to its expenditures? And we're going to start with Roy Terry.
Okay, well, since I am on the school board, I might have trouble holding them accountable, even though that's my job. My job is to take the budget, which is prepared by the district. We have three meetings. One is coming up this month, one in June, and the final meeting is in August to approve the budget totally. We look at the budget. We decide what things we want to talk about, what things we want to find out about. We then go and sit down with the superintendent and discuss our questions, and discuss the things that we don't like or that we see as a problem. They adjust the budget and bring it back to us at our first meeting. The first meeting is pretty general, because we don't really know exactly how much money we're going to have to start out with. So it's just an initial meeting. The second meeting in June will be better organized in terms of the total amount of funds that are available. But then we look at it, and then we would vote on it at the final meeting in August.
All right, thank you. Tim Mosheer.
I would review the budget, see how much money is actually involved, look at last year to this year, and then try to figure out where to cut the budgets and add a little bit more money to the teacher salaries, and just go from there.
Thank you. And then Anna Torino, could you answer that as well?
Yes. What I would do, which is actually something I've been researching lately, is I would be comparing it to other counties and see how they're spending their money, just like charter schools, and see how they're more efficient than us and spending less money per student, and see how their system works better. And I would bring it back to the school board and say, "Why can't we follow these steps in order to save our county taxes?"
Thank you. Jen Mitchell.
Yes, so it's important to know that the Department of Ed ranks the districts based on the amount of dollars in their budget that go directly to the classroom. And I'm proud to say that Collier County ranks 11th in Florida at 97%. Our budget is a function of the revenue derived from your property values. So guess what? Our property values continue to rise, which means H. Skinner's collecting more revenue, okay? And that is a function of how our budget grows. We don't raise your rates to get more money, even not going with the rollback rate, which allows you to collect exactly what you collect, every penny you collected the year before and not a penny more. We can't go with the rollback rate, because as you know, fuel costs for us went up 40% this year. Our FRS, which is our pension contribution, went up 20% this year. So we're seeing huge cost increases too. But it's important to know that we are responsible with your money. We have over 137 different audit functions that are performed in our district every three years, most of them occurring annually. So really, it's about, in my opinion, responsible use of your taxpayer dollars.
Kelly Lichter.
All right, first, I'll say, you know, a lot of what you'll hear from the incumbents today is, I've said this before, they act more as PR reps for the district, but who you hire does matter, and I think it starts from the top. You look at the superintendent, who frankly is actually running the district, not the school board. And I think if, we got to start there in terms of the leadership, and hire somebody that is fiscally minded, fiscally responsible, and conservative on that front. And then, starting with that position, and you also look at the elected school board members, people that are going to be mindful of your tax dollars. And also, just to be more efficient with how it's spent. Instead of hiring, like, for example, they just added another attorney position, $160,000 a year. They created a diversity, equity, and inclusion position, $120,000, $130,000 a year. Yes. So you see all those things. It just keeps adding up. And again, who you hire matters. Thank you.
Jana Greer.
To keep the school board accountable to a $1.3 billion, current $1.3 billion budget, we actually need to do an efficiency audit. I think when you look at financials, yes, costs are increasing, but you need to see how can you be efficient? Are you being efficient with what you're spending? Reducing that budget, as a conservative, that's definitely part of my goal, but we need to see how we can be better efficient in what we're doing. The stats say that we put a good portion to our teachers. Well, when you talk to educators, I don't think that they would actually agree with that. So I think that needs to be reviewed, and then we can build from there. A zero-based budget is actually also an idea, where you start at zero and build from the ground up. People say that it can't be done in government, but yes, it can. So I think that those are ideas that we need to bring as a board to help hold our superintendent and the staff accountable to our budget.
Thank you. And District One, Kim Bouvier, you're first on this one.
First of all, I would start having candid discussions about the budget after thoroughly scrutinizing it in front of my constituents rather than behind closed doors so much. It's very rare that we actually hear healthy, robust discussions on the dais about anything. And we have a typical pattern that goes on, where we just have a consent agenda that is passed, five, zero, with no questions brought up, nothing discussed, and how is the public to be involved in making sure that they are holding the board members accountable if that is the case every time? I would also be making the apples-to-apples comparisons with other budgets, and I'm also not convinced that they're doing proper auditing currently, so I would be making sure that we are getting a proper audit, a forensic audit, an external audit, so to speak. And I do know that just recently at a board meeting, they went ahead and...
Thank you. And finally, Jerry Rutherford.
As a contractor, my question would be, a school for $100 million, were there three bids? What were the other bids? What if one bid was $90 million? You saved $10 million. What if another was $70 million? You saved $30 million. So I'm a contractor. I've been a painted contractor for over 20 years, and I would take the budget apart when I get in there, take the budget apart, and part, piece by piece, examine every bit of it, and question everything I could question. I think I could find some ways to save some money. Thank you.
The next question is an important one for me, as someone who started a parental rights organization and is very vocal about parents' rights. And a lot of what Governor DeSantis has done, and thank God for Governor DeSantis, has been to protect the right of parents when it comes to the education of their children. And so what the club wants to know today is what your view is of their parental rights as well as parental involvement in our schools. And we're going to start with Jana Greer with District Three.
So parental rights and the involvement in schools. I am so thankful that Governor DeSantis and our legislators have really put that to the forefront. We need the transparency, not just to the parents, but to the public in general. So having parents and being involved and in control of their students' education comes also even with school choice. As Erica mentioned, having the ability to have choice for your kids is one of probably the biggest parental rights that you could enact, and our state has given that through the charter school system. I appreciate that, but there's also not equal funding for the charter school system. So I think that that's an area that we definitely can improve on as far as for local tax dollars going to those charter schools. I want to see, from a policy standpoint, in the parental rights, those policies from the law, if furthered within CCPS in the school system. The board is the policymaker, so we can take from where DeSantis has started and continue and even go further. We can do better.
Thank you. Jen Mitchell.
Yes, so parents absolutely must have a seat at the head of the table. In fact, we know that parent involvement is the single largest impacting factor in a student's education. We certainly welcome that. In fact, just this past year, we created parent academies, where we hosted over 45 different events at the district to inform parents about various things going on within the district. So as a parent myself of four children who've been in our schools, I think it's absolutely imperative. It's the reason that I ran for the school board.
Thank you. And Kelly Lichter.
Yes, so I would say that I'm actually an example of parent involvement with founding my children's school, and I've been working with several other parents to continue improving education across the county. But to that point about parent rights, I do need to bring up something from when I was on the school board. And as a voice for parents and being in the voting minority, we had expressed concerns about some of the materials in the media centers. And this was years ago. This wasn't something new. I know it's been talked about now. And being in the voting minority, we were shut down from blocking this. So how do parents really have any rights when these books were allowed to stay in the media centers? In fact, they blocked the public from being able to view what was in the media centers. And I find that very concerning. So they can say that they care about, you know, parental involvement, but when they are continuing to allow these materials to stay in, I think that is highly offensive, considering we're dealing with minors. They're not adults. Thank you.
Jerry Rutherford. Yes, it's your turn.
The children belong to the parents, and the parents are obligated to take care of their children. The spiritual, physical, emotional, and sexual needs of the children lay on their shoulders. The only obligation the school has is to teach subject matter. Where the subject matter is concerned, the parents have a right to know what is being taught and should voice their concerns. The school should stay within the borders of the subject matter. Parents need to be involved in their children's education. Are there still PTA meetings? The question is, what are the parents doing to find out these things? It's only... It's only recently that they've gotten an uproar to find out what's going in the schools. Why wasn't this happening for the last 20, 30, 40 years? I think they should be involved.
Thank you. Kimberly Bouvier.
Thank you. This is near and dear to my heart. I think, as has been said, yes, studies do prove that it is key to having well-educated children to have their parents involved. And I am big on protecting parents' rights because I cannot protect students unless I first protect the parents' rights. Because it is the parents' fundamental right and responsibility for the upbringing of their children and their education and their mental and their medical health. And I think it's really important that parents should have some kind of access to the classrooms. When my daughter was getting into school, I made sure to visit classrooms before I ever even got her into school. I visited every single classroom available. I went to public schools, private schools, parochial Catholic, non-Catholic, I went everywhere. And I sat in on classes and I took her with me sometimes so that we could see just how well she would fit into that room.
Thank you.
And we aren't getting that access anymore.
Tim Mosheer, you're next.
This week, the Collier County School Board had their meeting on Tuesday. Instead of doing it the normal time at four, they did it at 8:30 in the morning. This kind of takes away most parents' rights to be able to go to the meeting because they're just dropping the children off and unable to make it there to the school board meeting. This is another example of what the school board is doing to kind of put parents on the backseat. It was a very important meeting, and changing it to that early in the morning to go over the subjects made it a little bit more difficult. So also, you know, there's certain books that shouldn't be in the classroom, and Fort Worth's Alliance has been pushing for it for a long time, and, you know, it shouldn't be there. And right now, it shouldn't be that easy, that difficult to take the books out of the classroom. So they're just not standing with the parents. I would make the meetings available at a time where they could go and actually see what's going on with the books and other things that's happening. That's all.
Anna Torino.
We really need to focus on educating our parents and letting them know what their rights are. I have had to tell so many parents about the school choice option and inform them about Naples Classical and all the schools that are out there that they can actually change. Parents are complaining that they're lost in the schools and they do not know how to get ahold of the teachers, or they even asked me, Anna, is this legal for them to do? And I have to tell them, you have to go to the school board. As to the parent academy, I've been to the events, and the last few have been mainly about how to help your child with anxiety and dealing with a test. So I honestly think that we really need to revisit these parent academies and try to educate everyone. People that do not speak English and people that speak English. We need to bring the community together to help all the children that are being educated in our schools.
Thank you. And finally, Roy Terry.
Yes, I think that parents have every right to know and make decisions for their children. There's no doubt about that. In the district, we have many different opportunities for parents to serve. On every school, there's a SAC committee. That SAC committee meets with the administration of the school. It's made up of parents and community members at each school, and they make a lot of the decisions for what's going on in that school. So SAC committees are one way that parents can get involved. There's also, on the high school level, there's the band boosters, there's athletic boosters, there's all kinds of chances for parents to put their input into school and the activities that their children are taking in. Also, there are night-
During the first semester and second semester, open house nights, where parents can come in and meet with teachers, discuss their student progress and find out what's going on in the school. There's plenty of ways through our website on the district that they can get information. Of course, sometimes they may need some help getting in there and find-
All right, we're to our first lightning round. We have quite a few questions here, and we're going to go through them pretty quickly, so get those paddles ready. The first one, have you attended or acted as a spokesperson on behalf of CCPS or children at a CCPS board meeting? Have you, well, you're great on this one, Jerry. You've been to every board meeting for the past 30 years. I'll just tell you what to do, Jerry. And ask if you have spoken at a board meeting. Raise your hand if you're all the way up here with it. You need two paddles for that one.
I've been there 35 years, too.
Does this community have a role and a right of input in the superintendent of school selection process? Does the community have a role on the superintendent's selection process? Should American history be taught every year, grades K to 12? Yes. Do you believe that there should be stricter policies on bullying? Yes. And finally, will you stand with parents who are against sex education being taught or explained in the early childhood grade? And finally, are you against CRT? Question three, and we are going to start with Kimberly Bouvier in District One on this one. What changes in state law are needed and what will you advocate for as a school board member to accomplish your goals during your term?
I think we've already gotten off to a really great start with a lot of laws that have been changed recently. And so I haven't got a lot to add to that. It's exactly what state laws to be changed, but I would definitely be making sure that I got behind every single one of those and making sure that we are adhering to every single one of those laws and that there are consequences for administration or staff, teachers per se, that aren't adhering to it. And one of the things in particular is getting the pornography out of the media centers. That is totally against state statute right now, and it has got to go, and no one has even brought it up for a vote. So that's a real problem.
Jerry Rutherford.
I have my answer on the very end in two minutes, but let me say this. I believe that we need to have people on the school board that will not just keep the laws that are there, but will look at all sections of the laws and regulations. Matter of fact, I can think of three regulations right now that have not been used that would benefit our students, and I plan to use them when I get in there.
Thank you, Jerry. And again, just a reminder of the question, this is actually about state law. A lot of education is governed by state law, and as a school board member, you have a great voice and a big microphone when it comes to influencing state laws and the changes in that. So they do look to school board members a lot in legislature to get input on the laws that need to be changed based on what's going on on the ground. So the question is, what changes in state law are needed and what will you advocate for as a school board member to accomplish your goals during your term? And next is Kelly Lector.
All right, so to answer this question, oftentimes, I think there are far too many laws and that they continue to pass more bureaucracy. And then often, they'll sound good on paper until you put it into practice, and then it was that you almost say, that wasn't really thought all the way through. So I would say there needs to be some changes there. But let me point out on the legislative front, as a school board, every year, they create a legislative platform. And if you take a look at the legislative platform, you see their priorities. I think that speaks volumes to the kind of priorities the current board has. And most of the platforms have been anti-charter, anti-choice. And in fact, when I was on the board, I was a legislative liaison one year. They blocked me from ever doing it again. You know, I went up to Tallahassee, met with the legislators. Then another board member who was a liaison didn't even make the trip to Tallahassee the next year. And I thought, why are they so threatened about me speaking to legislators? I think you know why.
Jana Greer.
So changes to state law and what I would advocate for, I would think there should be change to power to citizens to remove board members. We actually could, do not have the authority to, even though there are elected officials, to re-board board members. We cannot recall them. So that's a governor power right now, and I think that that, from a constitutional standpoint, it should go back to the citizens. I would also think that curriculum, I think that needs to kind of be moved more to a local base, remember, from a constitutional focus, moving that power towards a local base to allow local schools and districts to choose what is better for their citizens. I also think that charter schools and school choice, that funding, that funding needs to start and follow the student, which would be considered like an ESA, there's different versions of it. But I think from a legislative standpoint, those are areas that I would advocate for. Thank you.
Jen Mitchell.
I would like to say, Governor DeSantis has been a board member's dream because he has been the education governor. He has passed laws that provide to parents' rights. He has increased teacher pay. He's decreased testing, created better standards for our students, and of course, passed bills to clean up instructional materials, library, utility materials and those types of things to give school board members more power. But I will say this, I'm glad my opponent said this, we actually have great relationships with our charter schools here in Collier County. I was proud to approve Mrs. Thomas's two charters during my term on the board. And I will say this, because both of my opponent's children attend, my opponent's charter school, I think oversight of charters is absolutely necessary, as is the $2 million of funding that goes to public schools, excuse me, private schools right now. If the money is going to follow the child, as Republicans, we should want the taxpayers to be able to follow the money. That's the only legislation that I would like to see that DeSantis has already won.
Anna Torino, you're next.
I thank God every day for Governor DeSantis, and I respect everything he's written. But there is one thing that I would like to see changed with regards to curriculum. The sex ed class that they're showing right now our students, what I would like to do is move that to an after-school class and involve the parents. Because that is something that is between the parent and the child, and the parent needs to know that that person will always be there for them, and they need to confide in them, not in the teacher in the classroom.
Very clear.
One thing that I would do is, I know it's been a reduction in testing, I would do away with testing. I think it is not a good thing to be doing. It can stress our children, especially at the lower levels. And I think the testing would be something that I would like to see less. Also, I would like to have mandates from the legislature. I would like to have years of delay in many mandates so that the districts can properly plan to implement them. Thank you.
And Tim Mosheer.
Right now, with the government, everything they do, they put too many new laws on. Just recently, DeSantis put some common sense laws on the books, which is very good. We need to follow more of that, eliminate the laws that aren't on the books, and actually start enforcing them. A lot of laws aren't enforced. Again, lots of laws on books are not being enforced, and as long as we can enforce what's on the law on the books and, you know, really don't get any new laws unless it's actually common sense and we can actually use. That's all.
All right, thank you very much. Question four, what experience do you have in creating and writing policies and how will you improve the current CCPS policies? And we're going to start with Jen Mitchell, District Three.
Yes, so two of the things that I'm really proud of, despite what occurred today, is that we have actually enacted policy to support parents and protect students specifically in the areas of explicit library materials. This is something that we've been pushing on since the fall. If you've watched any of our board meetings, you know I keep banging the drum every month. And I'm proud to say that in our upcoming May meeting, we're rolling out the policy to be voted on. Additionally to that, we have added teeth to the policy about teacher conduct in the classroom with regard to ideological indoctrination of our students. They certainly are still afforded due process under the law, but we put some teeth into that policy to spell out consequences when a teacher crosses the line. Those are two things that I'm very proud of, having students in our schools, and know the importance of those two elements.
Kelly Lector.
Well, it sounds like the policies that are being changed right now, it's obviously an election year because these have been issues for years, maybe over a decade, so I'm not sure why it's just now being looked at. As far as experience, I was a former school board member and with founding of Basin, and we deal with policies, policy changes, improvements. But I do want to also point out about the mask mandate issue, because this is frankly, you know, it's a policy. And I know the incumbents like to say they follow the governor's orders, but when the schools reopened, the order allowed the schools to have a choice, whether they were going to mandate it or make a choice. So at Basin, our board said, we're going to make it mask optional. The district had every reason to do the same thing. They chose not to do that, and they didn't listen to the parents. We did, we made it optional. And I think that's important for you to know because what they're telling you is simply not true. They could have made that happen, and unfortunately, they masked their children for the entire year.
Jana Greer.
I am in business, so I help businesses, big, small, medium, large, write operations, policies, procedures for their operations. So I think that my knowledge and experience from being in business and helping businesses grow and develop those things will help me in the school board. Meanwhile, I have been learning and paying attention over the years of what policies they have put in place, like the masking, like the allowing of sexual explicit materials in media centers that continue to go on. All of these things, I think we have the absolute authority and process to change, and I want to see those changes. Thank you.
All right, Jerry Rutherford.
I wrote a policy for my, filled in my contractor business, so I know a little bit about it. Before I speak at school board meetings, I do my research, I dig deep, I've got books up, I have mine, and I formulate the answer and then I present. So that's the only thing I can do as far as making policy. Know what you're talking about.
Thank you. Kimberly Bouvier.
Thank you. I have some policy experience in management, I owned my own business at one time. And I also want to say that I have a lot of experience with policy and procedure with raising my children. I think that's a really important aspect, that when you have policies, you need to make sure that you have those policies in place, that they're comprehensive and that they're actually enforced and followed through on. And one of the examples would be, I'm not going to be up for any kind of unconstitutional mandates, and I think that we should have opt-in for many of the extra programs, especially sex education, rather than the opt-out.
Thank you, Kimberly. Roy Terry.
Yes, just in response to that, we do have an opt-out policy in our health curriculum, but two weeks before that subject is covered in the classroom, there's a letter sent to parents where they have the option to opt out if they don't think so wish. So every parent gets that information. But I like the opt-out better, there's so many students that we have that don't have parents at home that take, keep track of when they're close. As far as masks go, at the end of 2020, this nation was unsure exactly where to go with treating this pandemic, and it wasn't until later, after the first semester of the school year, they came out with a problem with masks. We opted to go with masks in the first year. First semester, we had 52% attendance back in schools. Second semester, we had 97% attendance back in schools. So our objective is to get as many students back in school as possible.
Thank you. Tim Mosheer.
Going back to personal choice and parents, part of the reason I got involved in school board races was because of the mask option. They were forcing masks on our children's faces to cover them up. They weren't, teachers weren't able to see their child's faces and vice versa. You know, they say, follow the science. If seven million particles spit on the head of a pin, there's no way a cloth mask is going to protect you, so I would have just completely eliminated that. And all the other policies, I would go opt-in because all the parents weren't paying attention, you know, parents paying attention. So if you opt-in instead of opt-out, that makes it a little bit more difficult to bring teachers, you know, parents into the forefront of what's going on. So I'd have the parents opt-in instead of opt-out.
Thank you, finally, Anna Torino.
Thank you. I do have experience writing policies as I help my husband with his business. He's a financial advisor with a Catholic internal order. And one policy I would like to revisit is students with exceptional education. Why does it take them six months to a year to be able to test the child? They're wasting time having the child be in Gen Ed, and they're delaying the advancement of this child. So I would like to revisit that policy and make some changes where we can get the help that child needs in order for them to succeed.
Thank you very much. All right, we're at the next lightning round, so again, we'll have those paddles ready for these yes or no questions. The first one, are you for children staying the pledge of allegiance in class? Yes. Are you in favor of celebrating religious holidays in public schools, including those wishing to celebrate Christmas? All right. Will you support a resolution at the school board level to limit board members to two four-year terms? Will you support providing parents with the funds received for their child to be used at any school of their choice, public or private?
used at any school of their choice, public or private? Will you support paycheck protection, which requires unions to collect their own dues directly instead of the district removing union dues from employee paychecks? Do you support the new benchmark testing being implemented by the state, which administers state exams three times per year instead of just at year end? So we are going to move now to the closing statements. Again, that's going to be two minutes each, and I'm going to go backwards from what's on the screen. We went forward last time, and we'll go backwards this time. So we're actually going to start with District Five with Anna Torino.
I hope you all are satisfied with the answers. I would love to sit on the board and represent the citizens, the parents, and protect our children and keep them learning. I would love to just, I'm probably lost for words here. Sorry. I'm just so excited, and I really want to represent our citizens. I have the experience, I've been in education for 15 years, and I refuse to be in a classroom because of what they're doing to our teachers. I'd rather work with children one-on-one, and I'm seeing the frustration with teachers every time I walk into a classroom, and they're just sitting there wondering what they're going to do. Right now, they just used up the whole math book. Did you know that they're done? And they're just coming up with extra supplies to be able to teach the kids for the rest of the year because they're done with the books. So we really need to focus on education, and we really need to prepare our teachers so that our children will become successful citizens. Thank you.
Roy Terry?
First of all, let me say that I'm proud to be part of the citizens of yesterday. I think over the last 10 years, we've made tremendous progress. We've improved graduation rates by 20% from 72% to 92% over the last 10 years. We closed the achievement gap of black and Hispanic students over the past 10 years. We have the third lowest mileage in the state of Florida. Actually, the last 10 years, we produced 1% over that period of time. We would be debt-free by 2026. I cashed a new high school, saving $41 million in five years of late district, 13 year of schools in the county. There's always room for improvement. Teacher salaries need to get better, affordable housing is important. Rezoning will occur, continued support for career and technical education. I'm running because we have real challenges coming over the next four years, and we need experience and expertise to meet those challenges. I have both of those. I'm asking for your votes, Roy Terry, on August 23rd. Thank you.
My name is Tim O'Shea, I'm running for school board District Five, and appreciate your vote. One of the things that got me going was the mask issues. After hearing that test scores were only 62%, and then hearing these wonderful people saying, oh, our graduation's at 90-plus better percent, again, test score's 62%, my math just isn't adding up to the graduation rate. So it's a lot of common sense that I think is not on the board right now, we need to put on the board. I, if there was, everything was going so great, I wouldn't have jumped into the school board race. I spent 30 years in the trucking business with common sense, delivering everything, and that was my opportunity to actually deliver a quality education to all the students here in the county, and just put common sense back in there, get the test scores back up, and help 38% of the students that are not passing to pass.
And then for District Three, Jen Mitchell?
Again, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. I just want to point out very quickly, if you've listened to the governor for the last two years, he's been quick to call out school boards around the state for lack of compliance. He has not called out Collier County Public Schools. In fact, he came and visited Collier County Public Schools in the fall, delivers a $6 million check to open a career technical education center, not in Collier, but in Lee's, because he knows we get the job done down here. Recently, Manny Diaz, one of the Republican figures who passed the most conservative education legislation in the state of Florida, was recently named our education commissioner. Who did he ask to come speak on his behalf at the Board of Education? Our superintendent. Why? Because she gets results. So as I mentioned, I'm the only District Three candidate with children in our traditional public schools. And I say that because it's important that you understand, my only agenda here is to ensure that our students have the very best education that they can possibly have. We serve every student that walks through our doors, whether or not they speak English, whether or not they have special needs. We serve every student with that sort of ability. Our district certainly has its challenges with 55% of our students who go home to household, where English is their primary language, 67% who qualify for free reduced lunch, but these aren't the challenges that we shy away from. As a current board member, I maintain strict oversight of the budget. I directed risk assessments to be performed in the areas of IT, ARP, funding, the construction within high school. I've enacted policy change to support cleaning up the library instructional materials, as well as teacher conduct in the classroom, and I maintain a focus on student achievement as evidenced by the statistics we cited earlier. I've increased career technical education opportunities for our students with the expansion of Biotech plays and the Center for Machine Excellence here in Collier. I'm a competent leader who shares your conservative values and has the communication skills to build consensus, work with the people around me to move the big ideas forward to our students here in Collier County. And I hope I can find a really honest 23rd. Thank you.
All right, first I want to thank the Women's Republican Club today for the professionalism of this forum, so thank all of you who've been a part of it. I do want to share some good news and some bad news, so let me go with the, I'll go with the bad news first. So Governor DeSantis had passed a civics literacy initiative, so all graduating seniors would take a civics test to see where we are. And the bad news is that in the state of Florida, the pass rate for our seniors was 39%. In Collier County, it was 36%. At Mason Classical Academy, I'm proud to say that the pass rate was 91%. In 2016, I know I saw Ms. Penton here today, we were rehashing the old election, but if you weren't aware of what happened in 2016 school board race, that summer, Elastus Path came in and spent $265,000 to buy two school board seats, okay? $265,000. If you look at the, you can go on colliervotes.com or .gov, go check out the treasure reports of all the incumbents, and where's the money coming from? It's coming from the Democrats. If you don't think they're awake, they have been running this school board for years. And I have to say, I'm very hopeful with this Republican Party this year, because prior years, we've all been a slate, not everybody, but some of us were, and we allowed the Democrats to win. And we can't let that happen, and I've had more conversations with people in the last several months that said, I've never been involved before. What can I do to help? That is inspiring, that is awesome for this community, for the next generation, so I ask that, we can't let them win again, so if you could get behind Kelly Lipter's campaign, kellylieter.com, I'd appreciate your support and vote on August 23rd. We need all of your help. Attend the forums, as Mr. Floss said, he's got a forum on Tuesday, so you can hear more questions, more answers, and really get to know the candidates. Thank you.
Thank you all again for coming out today and hearing from these candidates. It is so important that we continue to stay engaged. Some of us have been engaged for a long time, and others are just now joining in. But I want to encourage you to stay engaged as you continue on. The election's not until August 23rd, so we have a little bit of time. You have more time to meet with the candidates, more time to speak with each one of them and learn where their value set lies. As I said, I'm American First, constitutional conservative, I'm a mother of six. It is time that we vote strong conservatives into office, who will take those values and put them into the policies. We've had problems over the last, over decades, well, several decades actually, with a left coming in. As you just heard, again, Democrats have funded candidates. The teachers' union, the National Education Association calls me, me, a terrorist, because I'm a mom who stood up at school board meetings. That shouldn't be allowed. We cannot continue the funding in the ways going. So I just thank you for today, I thank you for coming. I ask that you continue to stay engaged, and I appreciate your vote on August 23rd.
And finally, Jerry Rutherford in District One.
If you correct rate students that can't read the diploma or do an essay, have you given them an education? The government as well as school system should follow Thomas Jefferson's advice. Each law or regulation should be written in simple, non-technical language. Thomas Jefferson stated, "Laws are made for men of ordinary understanding and should therefore be construed by the ordinary rule of common sense. Their meaning is not to be sought for in metaphysical subtleties which make anything mean everything or nothing at play." The school agenda, as well as our government, write regulations that are hundreds of pages long. No one in the general public can understand them, much less the school board or the superintendent. I believe things would change drastically if the school board and the superintendent demanded that the language of the agenda items be on common language and vote, and the vote of the school board be in the local newspapers. People would know in a heartbeat through the vote board in the next election. Vote for someone who wants transparency in the school board.
There is a great need through governance and new oversight on our school board. For three and a half years, I've not heard one mention of the 38% of students that are failing. Now, in an election cycle, we start hearing a little bit about that, and it makes me question things. The excuse that it's because our students, that our students are failing mostly because they come from homes that are not English-speaking, or from poor economic backgrounds, that just is not the facts. That's purely rhetoric, I believe, because the facts show overwhelmingly that charter schools are able to, in the same demographics, time and time again, outperform the public schools. So we need to do what they're doing. It can be done, and it should be done, and we got to pay more attention to those students that are failing. And English-speaking is not enough of an excuse, either the lack of speaking English, because we know that during all the years that we had such an enormous influx of non-English-speaking immigrants from European countries, it had little to no effect on children being successful in school. It's nothing but a blame game. And I just want you to know that I am going to bring that leadership necessary and make sure that the pornographic materials are removed for the media centers. I will acknowledge the one third of students that are failing, and instead of focusing strictly on accolades and ignoring failures, I will acknowledge them in all the areas that need improvement and bring solutions for those. So vote for me, Kimberly Bouvier, conservative mom bear, the best choice in District One. Thank you.
Please give an extra round of applause for our candidates. Thank you so much.